Okay, so nobody's in charge here, so I guess what like as Steve Murphy would say, by unanimous consent, we can open the meeting, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we do one, two, three, "Not it" for chair?
What?
Can we call one, two, three, "Not it" for chair?
Chris was the chair.
Chris was the chair, yeah.
He was the chair.
Yeah, yeah. So the first thing we have to do, so we're gonna call the meeting in order at 6:02 like we did last month. Now we have to select a chair, we have to organize a board by selecting a chair, vice chair, and a clerk.
I nominate Diana Petusi as chair.
I'll second that.
Well, since you've already turned it down, I don't wanna put you back on the spot again, so...
Once, once the school board, um, once that, my term on the board ends, I'd...
In another year?
Maybe a little before that, but, uh, um, yeah.
You could see how it goes.
I'd consider it, but, uh...
I just will try really hard to keep things in order and not let people go on and on.
We can help too, Diana, right?
Yes, we can, yes, we can too, yes, you can too.
Well, no, I'm not gonna, but other select board members can.
Yes, yeah.
Um, if you're gonna...
Do you want me to have a coffin fit?
Be the chair, does that mean one of us has to be the clerk?
We'll get you a back.
I will still do the...
You're a very good clerk.
I will still do the minutes if somebody else wants to take the title of clerk.
I thought Michael was doing the minutes.
He's doing, he does a draft of the minutes and then I do a final of the minutes. So that's not that hard anymore, but I still like to, I still don't mind doing it.
Well, thank you. If you're doing all the work, you should get the credit. Can you be the chair and my clerk at the same time?
Well, the credit. Good one. The power and the credit. Oh, well, who wants to be vice chair?
I'll be the vice chair.
You could be that, you could be that.
Okay. Or do you guys have to vote for me?
Oh, yeah, I'd nominate you for the, Lizzie for the vice chair.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. We have to determine...
So you're being both clerk and chair?
No, I'll, I'll take the clerk position.
Okay.
So we have to determine the time and place for our regular select board meetings. Um, I guess I would suggest we stay the same, the second and fourth Monday of the month at 6 o'clock at the community room at the Woodbury Public Library.
Do we make a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right, yeah, good. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we're supposed to determine a newspaper of record for publication of legal notices and, um, I was, I did some research into that last year and found out that it has to be the Times Argus. It has to have, uh, be a newspaper that issues a print version and is generally available. I mean, you have to go looking for it. It's not available in Woodbury, but I'm sure you can get one in Callis now. Or you can order it through the mail. Some of these others, like the Morisco one, you can't even get through the mail, so... So I guess I'll make a motion that, uh, the Times Argus would be our newspaper of record for legal notices.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the other thing we're supposed to do is, um, adopt some rules for procedure, but I don't think we really have time for that tonight, so I made this for you to take home and read. And we could talk about that next week. Okay, um, I gotta stop, take the notes. So, anybody got any adjustments to the select board agenda?
Not me.
I have one.
All right.
We need to have, we need to appoint one of us to sign these overweight permits.
That's usually the chair.
Well, we've got it set up now, so the Alfie...
Could be the clerk.
Can you, can you describe to me the overweight permits?
Yeah, right, um...
Neither of us.
Uh...
I mean, I can make a guess.
I don't know what the weight is, but, um, our roads have a posted weight limit and, uh, if vehicles wanna go above that, they have to get a permit and then I don't know what happens. Um, I think it's a Department of Motor Vehicles requirement. Can you look at one of these?
Yeah, I, I think I know what you're talking about, yeah. So folks are just asking for permission to go down the road while the roads are posted.
Right, I mean, this one, this one is a fleet permit from Rock of Ages. Six trucks, 120,000 pounds.
But presumably Alfie's just forwarding these that he refers.
Yeah, he, he looks at them first. They go to the office, they pay like $10 or something like that.
Yeah, $10 for a fleet and $5 for a single truck.
Got it, yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess as long as he's gonna keep doing that, I'm the one that's always around, so I could do that.
Yeah, if that's the role of the chair, I think that's great.
Well, that's, that's the reason I'm here to talk about.
Yeah.
Why, why are these trucks allowed to haul on this road when they're in the condition that they're in? My mother met one of these granite trucks.
Can we wait till public comment?
Yeah, could you, can anyone just second?
My name is Jason.
I know, but we have a section where you can talk.
There's a public comment section just maybe like three sections down.
It's coming very low.
Yeah, coming very low. So, um, so adjustments, that was the only adjustment. We'll approve these bills later. We approve the minutes, um, Lizzie in, in that folder.
Oh, yep, I didn't look at.
And I'll, and then we have public comment for items that are not on the agenda, so...
Not allowed to speak?
Yes, please.
So why are the trucks being allowed to haul on these roads in the condition they're in?
Are they posted yet? I mean, I'm...
Why aren't they posted? Every other town is posted.
Yeah, and that, I guess we'll have to wait till...
Why are they not posted? Because if these roads don't get posted, I will call the state of Vermont and have it posted. Because my mother met one of these granite trucks. I worked at this quarry for 20 years and these trucks were never allowed to haul in road conditions like this. These roads are atrocious. I've been up the Cabot Road a couple times, more than a couple times, and these roads are terrible. Why are they tearing up this road and allowed to haul this weight on this road? And furthermore, how many cubic feet are they hauling off this hill a year? Because the last I knew, they were only allowed 400,000 cubic feet off this hill a year and they're hauling way more than that.
I'd have to check into that, how many... I seem to recall the last permit they got that was allowed a lot more than what they had been previously allowed, but I don't remember the number.
Well, they've been hauling a lot more than what there left. I know that. They did that when I worked there. And these granite trucks hauling on this road, when you got first, you know, you've got passenger cars going up that road and you're meeting a truck that's hauling 120,000 pounds coming down that hill and you, you're in a car and you have to get out of the way of that truck? That ain't right. And these roads should be posted and they will be posted.
Can we talk about that when Alfie gets here? Because he's gonna be here and I can't answer why they're not posted. I don't know what the time. I know there is a time that the state sets that they have to be posted, but I don't, it's usually later than this.
Well, mud season kinda doesn't go by dates. Mud season goes by what it wants to go by. And right now mud season is in full swing and they got granite trucks that got stuck. And I saw where the, the town truck almost got stuck up by the quarry. So you're still gonna allow these trucks to haul?
Like I said, we, I need to talk about this with Alfie.
Well, he's not here.
He will be.
He will be here. He often shows up a little ways into the meeting, but we're still here.
He's not on the agenda until 7 o'clock, so...
Well, I'm not gonna stay here until 7 o'clock for...
We could get your number and we can get back to you as soon as we find out. We have, it's just questions we'll have to ask Alfie.
Well, you're, you're bringing this up now and he's not here, so why are you gonna bring it up?
Well, you're bringing it up. I should've said that you have to wait until we get to the road commissioner report, but I didn't wanna do that because you're obviously anxious to talk about it, so that's fine.
Actually, Diana...
So we just can't answer you.
Alfie's coming in right now.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Yep.
So let's maybe give Alfie a second to settle in before we bombard him with questions. But is there other pub, public comment that folks?
Michael?
Yeah, I got, I might as well wait till, he's here, I might as well wait till he gets in as well, 'cause...
Here, this for him, for road stuff? Okay. Patrick's on the agenda for later, so I think...
Do you wanna go on the town meeting recap?
Well, that's gonna take a while.
Just a question, if people are here with public comment and questions, should we switch the order a little bit? Just to sort through it all?
Alfie's here now, so we can, although, yeah, we, I guess we could. We don't have to change his whole report, but we have a person here who has some questions about why the roads aren't posted yet and...
Okay.
Yeah?
Who's that person?
Jason.
Okay. So why are they, why are they not posted?
Because there's not much value in it, quite honestly.
No value? Why? Because your mother didn't meet a tractor trailer loaded with two blocks and got crowded off the road right in the mud hole going up the Cabot Road? I worked this quarry for 20 years. I know exactly what's going on with this quarry. Okay? And, uh, these roads should be posted. There should not be granite, I saw where your, your truck got almost stuck just past, uh, Deb Barrett's house in the mud and they had to pick the plow up 'cause they couldn't go through. So why, why are they not posted? If the truck, if the town truck can't get through, why are the granite trucks allowed to go through?
Well, um, my reasoning is because you can only stop a few trucks. Posted to the, to the till, you can only stop a few trucks from traveling these roads.
The most trucks that travel that road are granite trucks. That's it. And if you post that road and Steve Dale knows it and Donnie Gallison knows it, Donnie Gallison won't haul, haul that road.
I've had conversations with...
Steve Dale won't haul that road either if it's posted.
Okay, look.
Is there a rule, uh, the state gives you a date by which the roads must be posted? Or is it up to the town?
There is, it's not a rule, it's up to the town, town discretion.
Well, I'll call the state and I'll find that out myself, but...
No, he just answered the question.
Look, I don't know why I'm being attacked here, my friend. I don't know who you are.
I live in Woodbury. I've lived in Woodbury for a long time.
Okay, great, okay, great. Well, I deserve a little bit of respect and you're attacking me right now.
Yeah, I am, because why are the trucks hauling on this road? They always posted this road, always posted this road.
I believe the granite quarry pays this town a fair amount.
I don't give a shit what the granite quarry pays.
I think, I think we actually need to move on, like a different conversation. Unless you can be respectful, sir. We're gonna need to move on, so...
So we hear your complaint, I don't...
Yeah, so it, it sounds like it's up to the town. We can have a conversation with Alfie about like how that happens, but I think, but we can get back to you, but I think at this moment...
I think it's, it's time for me to call the state of Vermont and get the state of Vermont involved.
I think it's fine.
It's fine.
But, yeah.
I, I, look, I have no, no problem with posting the roads. I've done it for years. I've been in this business for 25 years, so I know about posting roads, okay?
I know, but this road was never posted last year. Last year was an exceptional year for not posting the road because it was actually a good year for the trucks to haul and I understand that. But this year is not. I mean, they had a granite truck get stuck at the top of the hill on flats and they had to pull it out.
In the, on the snow?
Loaded.
On the snow?
No, in the mud.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, but...
And you go right up past, uh, right by the Superman Rock, by the entrance to the quarry and you can see right where your truck almost got stopped. And if you don't wanna believe that, that's totally up to you. I don't care.
I'm not.
So they've had a truck get stuck and you think they're still gonna try to have hauling out of there even though they know the road conditions? I mean, they used to say...
Look at these road conditions. Do you wanna take your car? You take your Subaru up there and go through there.
No, I'm not, I'm not telling you that it's a good thing. I'm just trying to figure out what, what makes...
And what's making it worse? These granite trucks are hauling 120,000 cubic, out of there.
Yeah, we need to talk with them, I think.
Mike, yeah?
If I can comment, I used to do that my other life as our road enforcement. The municipality has the right to post a road at any time it feels it's necessary. And that's why when they get their permit, they have to have, they have to have insurance on file, number one. And, and the reason for that is this time of the year is, I think Alfie will, will acknowledge, the time of the year where you sustain the most culprit damage because of the heavy loads going over and the roads being soft and it's crushing culverts. That's pretty much how this permit thing all came about, was because of damage to highways and, and culverts included, obviously. But the town can put this into effect any time they wanna put it into effect.
It could go into effect tomorrow morning.
Yeah, no, I'm ju, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm...
Can I ask one question about road posting? Can, can it be that some roads are posted and other roads are not? No, that, once they all, the town roads must be posted?
One road posted, they all posted.
Yeah, okay.
It says it right on the permit.
Just clarifying.
All roads can be posted.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that doesn't seem to apply to things like fuel trucks and garbage trucks, which is...
No, well, that's, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah.
But it does, it does restrict, uh, the majority of the traffic.
Logging trucks have to get...
Yeah, and ones with the weight permits, quite honestly, are the ones that will do as much, if not more, damage than any of the fuel trucks and what have you.
So if, sorry, just another clarifying question. So if the roads were posted, presumably like the quarry, which is, sounds like that's a big deal, they could, uh, apply for, uh, these, these same weight, overweight permits?
Well, they, no, that's required anyways.
That's required anyways, okay.
It has nothing to do with the road posting.
The overweight permit is required regardless.
Yeah, okay.
And once they issue that permit, that, once the roads are posted, those permits are out the window.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta go by, well, the town set.
Roads posted, those, those permits don't apply anymore. All right.
Right, so in my past career, we were, they would give the road commissioner the right to allow at certain times. Like if a logger is logging and the roads are frozen, he's not gonna create damage. He goes in, gets his wood out. When it's froze, he gets out. We could do the same similar type of thing for, for the quarry.
Right, exactly.
Which is what's supposed to be, is what's supposed to be happening. I had a conversation with Jeremy up there at the office. He said, "Are the roads posted?" I said, "No, they're not yet." I said, "I'm hoping for respect from people to go when it's frozen and not create problems."
Steve Dale does not give me that respect. He goes up there all the time.
Well, Steve Dale works for the quarry. They're, he's a contracted...
Right, exactly.
For the quarry.
Then that means you have to post the roads so that the signs down there are saying they can't haul.
Well, there's a sign there that says they can't go until 8 o'clock in the morning, but they're up there at 8 o'clock in the morning, so you can put all the signs you want. You still gotta have enforcement. This is my point, this is what...
When the, when the roads are posted, the roads are posted. Those signs are up here for a reason. And they do steps off at that sign and wait until the time is come down off the hill. Yes, there has, there has been times that they broke that law, but for the most part, they do abide by that. But when you post a road and the roads are getting tore up, you go up that road. You, you must know, you work on it.
Yeah, I travel that road a lot.
You go up that road right now, find out how that road is. I, I've been up that road. You get stuck in the ruts, you can't get out and they're so deep that it, it's terrible.
Can I make a recommendation that maybe at, when we get to the road commissioner's report, we can talk a little bit more about posting roads? Had public comment, we've heard the, the comment and then I think maybe it's time to move on. Let Mike make a comment. We'll move on with the agenda. We have a whole section about the road commissioner report and we can talk about this then.
If I can add, 'cause I probably won't be here, but...
Please, please.
The last thing I'll say on the permit issue is, and Alfie is right, there, there was a time and, and in some towns they still allow it, where they can get ahold of the road informant and say, "All right, if the roads are frozen, you can go in, but you also gotta be out while they're still frozen." Right? And the problem, there's a problem with that and that is if you have a particular road that you had an issue with and you decide you wanna call motor vehicle and have them go up and do some enforcement and they know that you're letting them go in verbally, they'll tell you, it's any, it's everybody or nobody. It's, you can't do, because they have no way of knowing who's got, who made a phone call and it's a, it's a court issue.
Okay.
So I just, that's the last comment I'll give you on that.
Thank you.
But something you should be aware of. Right, so we're gonna put the quarry out of business for now until...
They, they do that every year.
They're putting the quarry out of business. They've always posted the roads, always. You were the, you're the road commissioner now? All the other road commissioners always posted roads and they always called...
When we get to the commission, to the road, and we'll move on from this, this conversation, I think.
Can we haul in when it's frozen? Yes, you can.
Right, but Mike's saying...
They're not, they're not, they're not going by that.
Verify that, though. Make sure that's the law, but that's the way it was. And understandably, because it poses problems in court.
Yeah.
But if my mother gets run off the road again by a granite truck, and even though I work for that quarry, I don't give a shit. I will pursue it further, okay?
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I send my piece.
Appreciate you coming in.
Your phone number, Jason? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, back to business, other business. Anywhere, oh.
Public, my public comment.
Your, your public comment. Oh, hey, we're, we're still on public comment.
I had the opportunity to go out earlier this morning, I say earlier.
Is this a road-related comment?
Yes. And, um, roads weren't quite up to snuff. I had to make a stop at a facility in Hardwood. I thought their, their schools are closed because the roads weren't up to snuff, if you will. And stopping there, I found out that they had a school bus that got stuck this morning.
In Woodbury?
Yes.
Oh dear.
I was there two minutes after, after...
Yeah, I, yeah, no, and I understand that you offered the same and they could follow you.
Oh, she did. She followed me on her own.
Yeah, no, no, but I guess where I'm going with it is with the road crew and the money that we're, we're spending, why can't we maintain the roads so that the school buses can get out and about in a timely manner like they should? And even if there's no school, with a 20% school tax increase that we got, you know, staring at us, we got townspeople who need to get to work so they can pay those, those taxes. And I, I apologize, I'm trying to keep it civil only because there's ladies here and if I slip up, I apologize. But, so the question is, who is it up to to make sure those roads are done? And done in a timely manner? Is it the select board? Is it the road crew? I mean, does the select board oversee the road crew? Because I don't know the answer to this question.
Well, the, the select board hires the road commissioner and the road commissioner hires the road crew with some input from the select board sometimes. And we basically, um, count on him to keep the roads open and when there are complaints, he prefers that the complaints go directly to him, but if they come to us, we pass them along to him and...
But Mike, to further answer your question, my understanding is it's collectively all of our responsibility, Alfie's, Diana's, Chris' now, and mine to, you know...
Yeah, I guess that answers my, that's where I'm going is, one would assume that the select board oversees the road commissioner and, because a road commissioner is not in elected position, correct?
Correct.
It's appointed. So that almost in itself would dictate that the appointing authority oversees...
Ultimately, it's the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm going with.
Select board hires.
So, you know, not that I'm after a piece of your Easter, it's just, it's just that I, I, you know, you'd hate to see something happen to, to a kid on a school bus because it was preventable. And that's my main reason for being here right now. And one has to assume that not all the parents are aware that there are issues out there. That being said, I would hope that with some changes would be made to make sure that these roads are... I mean, this is a trying time, I, I'll give you that. They gave us a lot of thought before I came in here. The roads are in rough shape, probably shouldn't be posted from what it's worth. But we gotta, the school buses should come before the quarries or anything else, if I was unconcerned, because if we can't take care of our kids, you know, choose my language, what the hell good are we? I mean, that's where I'm at. And that, that's a, that's a burden that falls on you folks and I would hope you would take it seriously.
Mike, I appreciate all of what you just said. Um, I do wanna just throw out in all of our collective defense that we are down a guy right now on the road crew, so there's only two guys, am I right? Currently taking care of all the roads and it's kind of a mess. But I 100% agree that, um, we need to make it a priority to get the roads ready for the buses and I think that the four of us need to talk about, you know, just having a good plan to make sure that that's happening and also, um, hopefully we'll have three guys soon.
With all due respect, and I, I totally understand your comment, but there was a time, not all that long ago, we had two full-time road crews and they did, West Woodbury, they did everything. So with, with, when you have four people and the budget that we have, I'm assuming they get paid overtime after they go over the 40 hours on the road. So that first 40 hours, it's... The only thing is, I still say that you gotta take that extra step for the kids, you know, you...
Can, can I say that, I think we've heard you, for sure.
We have.
We can have, we can have conversation with Alfie, but I don't know that it's productive to have the constant back and forth with...
No, I, I'm not coming here as an adversary.
No, 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 I know, we could just go on, it could go on for a long time. So I think, definitely heard what you said, Mike, and I think we can have conversation with Alfie, a continuing conversation about how to proceed with, uh, with roads in terms of posting, in terms of having ready for the buses. Yeah, I definitely heard you.
I'm, I'm, I'm good, you know, and the proof will be in the pudding, obviously.
You'll be a great chair.
And Mike, we took, um, Jason's number to be able to get ahold of him, you know, with follow-up if needed. Do you wanna leave your number with us so we can reach out to you? Well, you know, for, for us.
I mean, you want my phone number, so if you wanna talk, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
If you'd like to leave it.
All right.
Yeah. 7479, okay, thank you.
If you're gonna leave a nasty message, make sure you...
I won't leave a nasty message.
Okay.
That's the overweight thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Paul, you weren't on the agenda, so are you...
I'm with Patrick.
Oh, okay, oh, so you're way down, let's see.
Do we... Do we, do you guys wanna stay for the whole meeting or do you want us to ask the chair, actually? Do we wanna bump Patrick and, and Paul up so that...
Where are they?
So they don't have...
Is it the next on the agenda, or are you...
He's next, 6:20.
Oh, they are, yeah, okay, great, all right, yeah, they are, okay.
We're short.
6:20, hey, we're almost on time. Lizzie wanted to talk about, well, have a town meeting recap and talk about the order of the warding items and dealing with public questions that come up, so...
But I think you guys are here for the last item, which is, I'm guessing that you're here for this. Uh, follow-up on concerns about drug traffic, addiction, crime situation, is that why you're here, Patrick?
Oh, you wanna, okay.
So maybe we could jump to that? And Paul, were you wanting to discuss that too?
Okay, so go.
All right, so you all know what happened at town meeting, you were all there. Honestly, I was surprised. It started pre-town meeting when we had the, the start of conversation. I was surprised by the extent of the problem that we have. I know, I've known we have a problem. Everybody knows this problem. But to, to hear Paul talk about the numbers and the nature of some of those incidents struck me as, it, it's just unfair, the fire department for starters, to expect them to deal with that. But it also seems to me that people in town are more at risk than some of us realize. Now, if you know where I live, I'm out on the end of a dirt road. Nobody wants to go out and break into my house because they might not get out of there. But people who... But people who live on the main roads, in one matter of being, I think, victimized. And there's so little we can do about it, you know, the people in the room. I just, I, I just think we owe it to the fire department at minimum to have some kind of a town conversation. Is there anything we can do? What can we do as a town without a police force? To minimize the problem and/or to help the fire department deal with what they have to deal with? I don't have any answers. Um, I just think we need to have that conversation. And if in the end, we can't come up with anything, okay, so be it. If, if in the end, we can't agree, I guess so be it. But I think we need to have a serious conversation. Now, I know they're having a similar conversation in Hardwood right now. And I don't wanna duplicate that necessarily, but that's Hardwood. And I'm not sure that they're gonna pay that much attention to what's going on in, in Woodbury. So, I'm just here to ask what you think. How should we proceed? I, I think it should be a really inclusive conversation. Everybody should be invited. It should probably have different ways of communicating with each other. But how, where do we get started? And I, you know, I've talked to Paul briefly on the phone before tonight. And he shared some of his thoughts. But I just, and I don't wanna take up much time. I, I, I just sort of push me in the right direction here. What do you think we should try to do? And I'm perfectly willing to spend time helping to organize whatever we can organize. That's not the issue, but I don't wanna waste time. I don't have any preconceived notions. I want some advice on what you think is the best way to proceed, just to get people involved with this one. Not necessarily to solve the problem, because I wanna know what everybody thinks. I think the town needs to be bought in if, as a town, if we really wanna come up with a solution that has staying power and that will work. So that's my pitch.
So it's like a community forum, perhaps? Like a community forum?
That would be one way to go about it.
Yeah.
You know, when we had the whole conversation about changing town meeting, um, we did a lot of things, right? As I recall, we, we sent out a survey. I also don't think it would hurt, uh, to have the, basically the authority of the, of the town select board say
We will, we can't give you any, we can't give you any authority to have a meeting.
Sorry, we can't help.
No, you don't, but here's the thing, if I'm gonna reach out to people, if I can put something in town in front of a forum, I'd like to go and say that the select board has blessed having a town, that conversation.
It has more weight to it.
Yeah, yeah.
That kind of thing.
So could I make a motion right now that we make an official statement on camera? That we are in favor of you starting a committee to, you know, try to see what we can do about the drug issue?
That sounds fine.
Okay, I made a motion.
I'll second that. I'm all in favor.
Aye.
And if you have any suggestions about, like, suggesting, like, who, who probably would be really helpful and should be involved, let me know.
John Reed was pretty vocal at this.
Yeah, that would be good.
Who's that? Oh, John, I thought John was gonna be here tonight, but I guess not.
Now, when we did that town survey before, did that have any questions on there about the drug problems?
No, it was pretty much focused on town meeting.
Okay. Let's just say, because I still have that box of those in the vault.
So, Patrick, what would be, and Paul, what would be a reasonable, like, follow-up time to put you on the agenda to, like, a month from now? Month and a half from now?
I've been coming on the second meeting of the month, so probably not this next second, but maybe the second meeting of the next week, you can't wait that long.
At least that long, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a sad fact, but it's gonna take time to get the wheels rolling and
Well, everybody
I think we wanna be deliberate, that's why.
I don't know the answer to this problem either. I just, I have the same concern about one of our folks getting, we've had to take some pretty significant risks at times to, because you're just leaving someone dying in their house or on the side of the road.
Well, certainly when Paul started talking about some of the worst things that he's experienced in the last month, people were very interested.
I probably should've been having this conversation a long time ago. We've just been kinda keeping my mouth shut, but it was probably the wrong thing to do, but
So, yeah, I don't know if it's something that money can help. We've already found out, but we've discovered that we can, can't throw more money at the sheriff's department. They can't do anything. They, they don't do any law enforcement.
I think it would be good to have state reps or, you know
I think part of that committee might be inviting the lieutenant from the state police barracks to the Because I know after twenty eighteen, they did some additional patrols, which slowed things down quite a bit. But, again, they're stretched, so
So, Michael, your suggestion is to have Avram and
Yeah, there's, people, somebody needs to do something about this, and it's
It's not just here, it's town
It's everywhere.
It's everywhere. It's the same problem as we are here.
There's no such thing as township lines, this thing.
Nope, they're all over the place.
Michael, I think you're right, and I think, but, you know, right after the session, I think we should do that. I mean, it's the end of the session program, two months ago. And I think they're pretty tied up, but I think, right afterwards, we, it seems to me we should be in a position of having some kind of a public meeting, invite them and talk about the problem and hear what they, and what they have a solution. Which, they aren't gonna have any really solutions either. I think we're gonna have to get really creative, and I do think we're gonna have to spend some money. Wherever, however we spend it, I don't know yet, but
It'll make our town more attractive to live in if we have a plan for, plan for this.
Okay, that's all.
Or some night, just go drive around about two in the morning.
The state police are not active from two to five in the morning. And when I had this problem with a neighbor, that's when all the business happened.
Correct, because we'll make a call for assistance and I'll get told the trooper's an hour and a half out and you gotta just deal with the circumstance you're in. We're getting called to, I mean, my favorite call was someone screaming for help in the middle of the night in the Woodbury Cemetery. That's a EMS response. I had to drive up in the cemetery with who knows what was gonna be going on. It's like, where are the police? Ah, they're an hour and a half away. Nobody, they all ran, or it was, but that's the kind of nonsense that's going on. We get, I got a call for a car in the lake, middle of the night. And someone had tried to harm themselves, drove the car into South Woodbury Lake, and I'm like, there's nobody in it, like, why are we here? Well, the police are so far away, they just had you guys come. That kind of thing is going on. My son's a dispatcher, he goes, he's frustrated, they're doing it all over the state. They're, they're just sending local fire to check stuff. You know, it's just, it really shouldn't be happening.
Yeah, that's not right either.
So currently, we pay our constable five hundred dollars a year. There's classes and there's things that we can
Think he might be interested in becoming a certified, whatever the next level is? I don't know, he's talking about moving.
Well, I don't know if he would, but put it out that it's possible for somebody in to have training so that it's not one of us, I carry a gun to work every day, I, I do deposits. And I feel comfortable walking out of there knowing that, that car that's sitting next to me, full of people, knowing who they are. So, yeah, I think if we're paying somebody to do constable stuff, that they should have some sort of training to deal with this. I mean, we could always have neighbors and people, you know, you don't know what you're, they're, they're holding for weapons inside that car. So, banging on the window and telling them to get the hell out of here, and that, I've tried that many times.
Really?
And they just get out and do a little dance in the driveway on, in the video camera, not giving a who.
If, if I can comment on, on Randy's statement, it would be nice if, if we had somebody that had some training. But I will tell you that the first part of that training, they're gonna tell that individual, you don't go into a situation unless you know you got backup. So now you're gonna have to have two people involved. So
These are not easy
It's not an easy solution.
It's not, it's not.
And, and constable, there are different levels of what they can do and the file along with the law enforcement. They have to actually go through a certain certification, you've got all
You're looking at a committee that's just people in town. We're not certified to do anything.
Right.
Well
We don't have training, but we wanna do something about the drug issue, so it's either one person have, be trained and then
It's even more the, all these other issues we're having kinda tied to this. Because what happens is you've got this low-level user, salespeople, that are really not a lot of, they're not really a danger to you, with the chaos that they cause and the thievery that they cause. But what happens is somebody stole some money or someone didn't get the drugs. And then the next level comes up. We've had people here from Hartford, Connecticut that are Crip gang members, they're super dangerous. They just, they walk up, shoot you in the face. I mean, that's, that's, that's the three kind of levels I see.
That was about forty years ago, was that?
There's some super dangerous folks that come up here. They're just here hit, hit people and they're just, that was the people who wanted to be scared. The other ones are just a, this general din of problem you're having all the time.
And mental health's a part of it.
And mental health is a big issue, too.
Yeah, and you get the wannabes.
Yeah.
The what?
Want-to-be's.
Wanna-be what?
Wanna-be the big, don't mess with my turf individual.
Don't mess with my turf. Here's the, yeah, there's people, finding people beat up next to the road.
So what I, what I'm doing is, the next step is, I, I think I'll just put something, go differently worded, I'm putting a word in and say we wanna start a conversation and we wanna put together a small group. I'm not looking for a roomful of a hundred people right now. But if we can get a group of eight to twelve people who are actually concerned about it and wanna sit down and dig in, that would be really helpful.
Represented maybe the police.
Not two weeks, but maybe in six or eight weeks, we'd be ready to come back to you and, and share some ideas and start forming a plan, right?
Yeah, I think it might be useful for more than one, for a couple of people to go sort of monitor what's going on in Hardwood. Lucinda said she's been going to some of those meetings.
Well, she's there tonight, in fact, and I will talk to Lucinda about that. Um, yeah.
They seem to be, at least according to their notices that I've read, they're mostly concentrating on keeping drugs out of school, but
Well, that's a part of it. But I think we have a more media problem than that. Yeah, it's a multi-layered thing. It's, there are big problems like how do you, what do you do with kids and education? But that's what you do with people that are actively dealing in town, that's, but it might be one of the same problems.
Well, you may want, you know, you might find yourself in a situation where you got a combined effort between Hardwood and Woodbury. Because like you said, when they reach that town line, they say, whoop, they don't stop here, that means nothing, you know?
Yeah, and if they ever decide that they have extra people that they could hire, we could start talking again about
If you had that conversation tiles on the board, we'd talk about it.
Yeah, but they were, but they didn't, they couldn't get enough people to cover their own work.
I, I actually firmly believe if word gets out that we're trying to deal with this and that we're being proactive, people will not choose to stop here to do their, but
Really?
Oh, sure, why, why take a chance?
Yeah, that's, that's been my experience when you, when they put a little heat on it, even people driving around, being around, it's just not the safest thing to do. Because I had a problem on my road and I just made a point of pulling up to the cars and telling them they were on the wrong street. But again, who wants, you know, everybody's gonna do that, and they would
No, no.
You get, hey, it's a free country, and I said, it'll be a free country somewhere else.
Anyway, we'll do, where we can to come up with some kind of a plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say on my way out the door, I, I agree with you, the roads situation is just not what it was. I've been here for forty years.
I didn't plow my driveway, that's how much I don't wanna do it. I just scared off. I'm amazed you even got the road plowed, from what I saw.
Harold.
Thank you.
Harold.
Take care.
So, thank you all for being civil and all that. Oh, they're gone. So the next thing Lizzie wanted to talk about, the, I think you mentioned the, maybe having the, what did you say? I've got it here. Recent comments about the order of discussion at town meetings, suggestions to save the talking points for last so the people can vote earlier and not necessarily have to stay. I just wanna let you know that the reason we developed that format for the warning is, uh, because those two budget items at the end can be amended if some of the stuff in the meantime doesn't get approved. So that's why we do all the other stuff and then we do the big budget items at the end. Plus, there, there was a time when we used to have to, um, make the meeting last longer so the ladies of the school could sell their lunches.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Having the representatives come at the end
That was bad, yeah. That was bad.
It wasn't necessary.
Yeah, that was the
Typically, it's during lunch and at a different situation.
Right.
But taking up the whole time, people just got sick of waiting and they left.
Yeah, they talked too, too long. I don't know if we're gonna have that same guy next year.
That was exactly what was brought to me, too, that that could've been saved for later. And then also, um, the information on the school, even though it was really, like, important for everybody to hear it, I think there were some people who weren't that interested in hearing it and would've rather just gotten right to the voting.
Right.
Whether or not that's a good thing or not, um
Yeah, but so that's good to, I think a lot of people were not that interested as the conversation went on and on with the representatives. But what's different this year is usually they go to three other towns and then they come to Woodbury. But this year, we were the only one on Saturday, so they could come. Some, I don't know who, who decided on ten thirty, Ginger or somebody talked to them. And, uh, so they ended up coming at ten thirty and that kinda messed everything up. We were just getting started. And then we got delayed, so. But yeah, I don't think you had your ten-minute stopwatch on you.
But if the voters wanted to hear about the school budgets, they had a meeting Tuesday night for the elementary, there were nine Woodbury representatives there. How many on the school board, two, plus myself, so there was six other people there. Hazen, it was Chris, Steven, and myself that showed up for that meeting. No other towns person.
I think, I think my rationale for, for wanting to, to speak at town meeting, and I didn't actually speak, but wanting the, the school boards to be represented, is because we had so little turnout at those meetings. And so my concern was, is that those folks would go into a vote without any kind of, like, background knowledge at all. And I know it's up to them. I know it's their responsibility to do that, but, um, um, and, and maybe we can put that after all the voting has happened next year, like, that happens later. But, um, I just thought it was important for, for just a quick snapshot, um, so folks know what they're getting into when they vote um, for those school budgets.
So, yeah
It used to be that we, you know, we would vote on our, our school budget at town meeting.
Right.
And so then there was a really valuable discussion right there and it could be amended from the floor, but, um, we don't do that anymore. So that seems like the only time.
Yeah, and Anna, Anna Pelz wanted to say a few words, too. And it used to be that they would put a report in the town report. They don't do that anymore. But I think, I think people won't wanna know.
Is it that we can't put one in the town report anymore?
No, I don't think so. You can put in what you want.
So we could.
It's just that the schools, yeah, they paid for it, so they reimbursed us.
They used to, they used to put the whole thing in and they, yeah, they would pay for that one.
So now it would be, it would be honest to pay for it?
Well, Hazen never did, but the elementary school board did use to put their whole report in their budget. It would take up like half of the report.
So if the select board decided to include the, the, the school report in the town report, we could, and we could just decide to pay for it.
I don't think they, I don't think the OSSU would wanna do that. They've got all, they've got their system down. So you just get to click on a little thing on your phone and see the budget.
Yeah, I would love that. I think it would be good to have in the town report.
I think that they would do it.
Yeah, it would. You think they would?
I think all we'd have to do is tell our representatives to the Hazen board.
Hey!
I, I mean, that
They do have a, they did have a small printed report that was available at the town office, right? Both for Hazen and for Mountain View.
And we had two people come in and pick them up.
So if, if that's something that the board's interested in, how do we remember to do that next year? They being
Making a note. I'll take responsibility for it, because I'm thinking ahead to next year for moderating. Although moderator only serves through Article One, and then there's a, then there's an election. But, um, at least up through Article One, I'll have some notes. So if it's me or the next moderator, I can, I can take some guidance from these meetings and find out how to better run, moderate the meeting. Now, so that's one point. Who will remember? I'll take responsibility for that.
Thank you.
Um, there's another point, too. I'll suggest this. It's an idea. For special guests that come. I know in past years, it could've been the superintendent of the schools. Now it's, um, also it's commonly the representatives that come. If there's a sense from the select board and the people of the town that there'd like to be a limited time for that visit for the representatives to make remarks, and then for some questions, the moderator could propose suspending the rules for a specified period of time rather than suspending the rules to allow them, um, to allow discussion for an unspecified time. So if there's a sense in that, moderator could, could ask to suspend the rules for up to thirty minutes. And then people in the, in their seats would know that, um, you know, that there's just finite time there for that. just finite time there for that, so it's a way to do it.
Can I ask a question? It, is there anything that prevents us from when we make the agenda for the for town meeting to actually have that as an agenda item that the representatives will speak?
Well, they, we can give them one time.
So it could come, we could just have it as an item after all the voting.
Exactly.
And then if they show up early, we haven't gotten, then they just have to wait around.
Exactly.
Yeah, we could, we could, yeah, we didn't, like I said, this year was was different because whoever told them to show up at ten thirty or said it was okay to, whatever, that wasn't part of our planning, it just happened, so. And then somebody made the point that maybe that schools should, school representatives should talk after the representatives were here so they could hear that part of it, so. Fortunately, you didn't let that become too much of a mess, just got a little long. Everybody got to say what they wanted, so. So, yeah, we can, we can change things around when it happens. Somebody mentioned having some of our senators come, but ooh, God, that didn't happen. Is the library gonna do that, uh, meet with your legislators again?
Probably, yeah, last October, it seemed very successful, you have the three senators and two legislators in Michigan Springs. Yeah, we had dinner.
So Lizzie, did you have anything else on that one subject?
Yeah, just a couple, and and this is just me regurgitating comments from other people. Um, there was one comment, um, somebody thought it would be a good idea not to include the section at the end where we let people make comments that haven't already been sort of like vetted. So I I'm not saying I agree, I actually don't agree with this, I think we should let people make comments, but there was um a suggestion that we make sure that everyone who wants to comment has, you know, gone through a process beforehand.
Well, quite often, sometimes they do, there'll be a concerted effort by a group of whatever, environmental, environmental group or whatever um to circulate a petition. And then it comes to the select board and the select board decides whether to make it as um an item on the agenda, because that has happened over the years, we've had lots of issues, important issues that this is the only opportunity for townspeople to maybe maybe have a voice in, even though it's a small voice, but you know, our legislators do the same thing. And in Congress, they do the same thing, they get a group and say, we want this, bring it in or whatever, and it all adds up sometimes. So, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't agree that we should limit it, but the way it was done this year was a little informal, but it went okay.
I thought it was well done.
Yeah.
There's just a few things that, you know, got a little long, but.
Yeah.
So specifically, I think their their recommendation, can you remind me, because I think I saw that email too, from Jim, right?
Yeah, you did. Yep, so there was actually a little bit more to it too, so there was a recommendation that we have anything that's gonna be discussed, vetted beforehand, so that there's nothing that's not on the agenda. And I just feel like because it was brought to us, we should at least talk about it.
For sure.
And give our opinions.
Yep.
So pre-town meeting, which has been great for the library to do, which is, given the count for attendance, so much more than it has in the past, thank you.
Yeah.
But that's where people need to come, that's the pre-town meeting. You come to to discuss things that you want to bring up. But yeah, and maybe that's when we should have the representatives come, pre-town, pre-town meeting.
It's a good idea.
And make it more, more, um.
That's not a bad idea.
More, more what we're gonna say, so that people know that whether it's signs, whether it's, because that was another thing that people have come into the office and going, what the town meeting was supposed to be on Tuesday, why can't I vote? But yeah, if we can kind of wiggle things into pre-town meeting versus it happening at town meeting.
I think that's a great idea, Brandy, because there are some people who literally just want to show up and vote.
And they should still be able to vote, you know, like I, I agree that there should be information given out, but for those people that
don't want to sit through it or can't sit through it, it would, I don't know, it'd be nice to let people get to the voting, that's what they want to do.
Some towns have, I know I read something about Morrisville having, I think they're going to Australian ballot on a lot of things, but they had like a big pre-town meeting with a dinner and stuff like that. Opportunity for people to talk informally about, but anyways, that's.
There was one more um comment that was made, and I'm just gonna throw it out so that we've covered everything. And that was same person that suggested um having things vetted. Also suggested that we shouldn't be making public statements um on issues that are not town issues. So things, you know, global politics, whatever, um, and just throwing it out because it came up.
A proud Vermont tradition.
Well, and I think Steve ruled on it and ruled that it wasn't town business and then.
The assembly voted to do it anyway.
To suspend the rules and I don't know that there's a whole lot we can do about that, right? That's just.
Right.
So.
It's what people wanted, everybody got to vote on it, right?
So good suggestion, but from him, but I don't know if there's any, any.
One person didn't like it, well, sorry.
Not sure we can do anything about it.
I didn't like it either.
Okay.
I'd like to add another suggestion to improving town meeting, and that's on recommendation that I received, that the candidates for office be given an opportunity to stand and introduce their candidacy before the election. And that's my fault, I didn't prompt that um that introduction, so I take this part of the bill.
Yeah, it used to be that you weren't supposed to talk about that, no electioneering on the floor at all, but now the law has been changed so that people can get up and at least introduce themselves.
Too right, it says in the, in the law, the Vermont, I think it said to the extent permitted by by the voters, so. It's at essentially at the discretion of the voters, the law, someone to introduce their candidacy. But it's not a time for debate or comments by anybody else, but it's another note I'll I'll put for next year to remember if I'm there to.
So when somebody is is nominated, then you would ask if that person wants to get up and.
Sure, yeah.
Say hi, okay. It wouldn't be something you put on the warning or, okay.
No, no. Point of order to to recommend or suggest that they could stand, yeah.
Steve, thanks for keeping all these mental notes for us, and also just thank you for moderating a town meeting. It was really well done and I appreciate it.
It's a hard job.
Can we move on to the town clerk's report?
Well, basically, the only the town clerk has is elections, and I would like to thank everybody who stepped up to help me.
It was a hard day. Penny, did, did you know that Robin had a death in the?
Yeah, I did, I'm really sorry, we can come back to the town report too, if you want to circle back to it.
What do you want? We had a, we have a hundred and three registered voters, and out of that, two hundred and three voted. Um, ninety-four Democrats, a hundred and nine Republicans. Is what stepped up to vote on Tuesday.
Can we take a little moment of silence? Um, Terry was on the library board, part of the community. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I hardly ever got to know her at all.
I'd like to give my condolences to you, Robin, and to Terry's family, yeah. I served with Terry on the library board for years. She had, uh, she had a very bright smile, hearty laugh, she was very keen with the numbers, she was our treasurer, vice chair. And it's a loss to the board, the library, our community, and our families, so I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I kept you busy for the last few weeks.
Yes.
And Brandy and I and others chipped in and got things going, kept things going, teamwork. So you want to go next to town treasurer's report?
Yeah. Michael, I have one for you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Um, reports I had given to you, balance, financial statement, and due to, from, there's three different reports in one um packet. So cash receipts taken in over the last two weeks, uh, one thousand, one hundred, sixty dollars and forty cents. Um, fleet permits, records restoration, land recording, land copies, and vault fees. Delinquencies taken in over the last two weeks, two thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars and thirty cents. Adding that, we're putting on my different hat right now, uh, being the delinquency tax collector. Right now, there is ninety-three thousand, eight hundred, eighty dollars and forty-seven cents that's still delinquent. Payroll the last two weeks, seven thousand, four hundred, seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. Accounts payable, eleven thousand, seven hundred, fourteen dollars, ninety-three cents. Today, I transferred fifteen thousand from the money market over into checking to cover expenses. One thing I do want you guys to touch on is the mowing ad, to make sure that it's motioned and I can move forward with it.
Oh, I thought we did that last time, no?
There was no motion made on it. Uh, I made a tweet that you found, thank you, thank you. Um, but just to review it and so I can move forward, we're already getting, um, people asking, asking for um an RFP. Other goodies, other goodies.
So for town properties. To town per, okay. Per visit cost for mowing, trimming, hourly rate for additional work.
Oh, and I do have a.
I'll generate the voices.
So this will be the contract. That I'll tweak once, once we have chosen, once the board has chosen a. A vendor.
Well, it looks good, um, you you change it so it says the town of Woodbury is seeking bids?
Sure, whatever you want done to it, um, you've got to tell me.
I mentioned last time.
Just draw it in.
Could.
And then I'll retype it.
Is.
So we can get this on the ball. The ball on the rule, rule on the ball.
I'm gonna pass that on to her.
Sure.
And timeframe, how do you want it, how long? Now that the dates have already gone by, that I stuck in there, so I'm gonna have to tweak the dates.
The date's safe right now.
The twenty-first, that their sealed bids are due, so.
I wanna say by April twenty-first, do you want to move it up a month or?
No, it's, it's gotta be done, I mean, we should have somebody in line by middle, middle of May so they can.
Well, no, May is, they need to be already locked in with the flags, they, they need to be presentable.
Okay, so.
What would you recommend, Brandy, for?
Oh, here I'm looking, I keep thinking the cemetery is included, sorry, I would still want it.
Oh, you're right.
I would still want it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What would you recommend?
So if I put it in the paper, let's see. Um. How does that already work, when you have to get it to them?
Um, we usually have it there on a Wednesday and they can put it in on Friday.
So we could do it this Friday and next Friday, and then the twenty-fifth, you open them.
So it'll be March twenty, is that what you mean, March?
So we can still keep it the same, so still keep it the same.
Okay.
So bids could be due by the twenty-first, and the board can open them, review them, and then make a decision on the twenty-fifth. Everybody's fine with that?
Sure.
It waits only two weeks and I'll overspend it on, uh.
Twenty-first of March is not like really soon.
You will have it in the paper for two weeks if you're gonna do it for a Wednesday to a Friday, and you're doing your twenty-first.
I'm different on the day.
You can have it on, you can have it due on the Monday, the twenty-fifth, or whatever it is.
Yeah, at least it'll have to be that Monday, that's fine, yeah, then we're not.
So there'll be due the March twenty-fifth and they'll be opened on the twenty-fifth?
Or voted, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So I'll make a motion that we approve the um, the advertisement as amended.
A second thought?
Come in favor?
All right, yeah, so here's the amended one, I'm gonna use the rest.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want this contract back, Brandy?
Uh, yeah, I just.
Oh, do we need to, we're just looking at it, we don't need to sign anything?
Correct, no, we have, I can put their information in, then you guys will sign it. Other goodies, other goodies. VLCT audit, I have to get on the ball and do that. Packing away the year, boxing it up, um, fiscal year twenty-three. I don't think I have it with me. Um, I will be asking the board, and I don't know how I feel on it yet. So being the delinquent tax collector, um, my attorney resigned doing tax sales. So I have to find a new attorney. The new attorneys are requesting the signature of the board. Immediately.
Like, as in, to take them on?
I choose, yeah.
Okay.
Have you found one?
I have found one that I'm interested in, um, again, the detail I'm not fond of because I've researched two attorneys, um, they're hourly paid. The money's coming out of the town, it's not coming out of the the delinquent tax payer. And I don't like that, um, at all. In the past, um, I didn't have to cut one check to um my attorney.
They would take their their percentage.
Out of what they made at the auction.
Fifteen, the fifteen percent, was it?
Correct. Yeah, and they would hold the money, now it's a different ballgame, I have to hold the money, I have to put it in esc, uh, um.
Escrow?
Escrow account until the year's up. And um, it's gonna cost the town more money. And we're not making out in the end. So whether I do for next year in the town report or in the warrant, that either some things need to change, we increased our interest in penalty. I tried making it a, not a statement, but getting caught up, so you're two years behind, no payment, no correspondence with me, it goes to tax sale. And I still have ones that are two years behind with no payment, um, no correspondence, and um so, yeah, I am struggling because I don't want it to come out of the town's pocket, I don't think it's fair.
Would it be able to be reimbursed after the sale, like it would come out of the town's pocket in the immediate term?
No, because that's where the town set the rate of one percent a month.
Oh, okay.
So I can't just cushion money that wasn't in writing um to the policy.
I noticed that the Hardwood uh town manager has found a new attorney, did you check with him to see whether, you might want to check and see who's he's using?
It's just, that's, that's the new thing, or no, I shouldn't say the new thing, it's, but.
They're all doing that?
Hourly, hourly, and then I would hold the money. Yeah. So I'm, I'm still struggling with that one, because I wish I could find an attorney that doesn't put it on the town. Because we're not gonna make out in the end, we're just not.
A new law or something that?
No, it's covering the attorney's butt, what it is, and and um they're, they don't want to hold the money, um, they don't want to have to keep track of it, um, so I would have to babysit. They don't wanna have to keep track of it, so I would have to babysit, make sure, because it's gonna make interest in the bank. But, yeah.
But then the interest goes to the person who put up the money, right?
It's not to the town, put it that way, so. I don't, and I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair that you can go two years behind without paying and, and you're, well, they're costing the town money now because it doesn't pay for itself, and there's no incentive to pay your taxes on time.
Fortunately, most people don't see it that way, and they pay.
The tax sale money, is that, is that, do the lawyers get paid from that, rather than?
They get fifteen percent per, out of what they're collecting.
And then, and this new situation, they would just charge the town an hourly rate, but?
Hourly rate, but at the auction, they would still, so any research done, any process, them coming in, it's, we would have to pay out of pocket two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
So then could we charge them for coffees?
At ten cents a piece?
I thought you said coffee, no?
No, that's what, ten dollars a piece.
Brandy, I've got a question, so can the town recover those expenses that it incurs in adding to the taxes?
Not unless we have the interest and penalty, that's the only way.
But do people pay the interest of the penalty if they're not paying the tax?
Oh, yeah, well, when the property is sold.
Well, no. When it goes tax sale, it does.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, again, it's the town upfronting it and I don't, I don't like that. I loved my old attorney and I'm really, really upset they got done, because it, it just worked for the town. It wasn't on the town, townspeople, it was on that person, so I'm struggling with that one. But I still need to keep my policy and my, my, I have to expect, otherwise it's just gonna keep going on and on.
Is the tax, I, I don't understand the whole tax sale thing, but the tax sale money, basically, the town has to hold it in escrow because there is the possibility that the.
It's a whole year.
It's a one-year redemption.
My attorney, my attorney.
But you don't really have any funds to pay the lawyer upfront, that's why it's coming out of the town, you know, if, if you have to pay them an hourly rate.
Correct, it will be, right, so that's why I've.
Right.
Okay, I understand now, yeah, that's.
Because my old attorney never charged anything, it was just, and he held the money and kept track of it.
He even tried to pay you the eight percent.
He even did and I had to give him money back, I had to send the checks back.
Can I ask a quick question, just a clarifying question, so if, if that money is held in escrow and if, and we pay lawyer's fees.
Yep.
For that, and if that person whose property is up for tax sale pays within the year, then we're out the lawyer's fees?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
He, because they take it right out of the top, they calculate theirs and all I'm putting in the bank is what the bid went for.
But then, i- if it, if that person doesn't pay the back taxes.
Yep.
And, and, right, and it goes to tax sale, that money pays for the back taxes, but does not.
Immediately.
Immediately, but does not pay, if there's any more, it does not pay for the, the lawyer's fees.
Well, they take it right out of the top.
When you, when you say take it right out of the top, I don't know what that means.
So I have a tax sale. So I have a tax sale. Once that, I have a tax sale, today, I bid seventy thousand.
Yep.
On a place, immediately, the money would come, all checks for the bids would come to me. So you won the bid, you got seventy thousand, you put down on it, immediately, that gets cashed, the attorney fees go out of it. And then the rest of the pot sits in the bank for a year, one whole year.
Earn your interest.
So with this new attorney, you would wait until that auction before you paid them?
No, they're gonna send me bills hourly, they're hourly paid.
On a weekly, monthly basis.
So sending the notices, coming and doing research on every property, yeah, and then their cap is fifteen percent.
So the seventy thousand you just mentioned in your example, the attorney's fees come right out of that before the money sits for a year.
Yep.
Is there any way we could make it so the attorney's fees come out and an amount to reimburse the town for the money that they already spent on the hourly rate for the attorney come out of that too?
That's for the interest and penalty.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So the new guy.
Can we explain that again? I'm sorry, rather.
The new guy, new attorney, whoever, is gonna get paid hourly.
Yep.
Up into that auction.
Yep.
Once that auction happens, he gets, it gets another fifteen percent on what we've already paid him?
Still. Till the auction, yeah, yeah.
So they're getting more than they were getting before, correct?
Really?
Yes. Okay.
Whoa.
So my old attorney involved would, everything would be absorbed. He wouldn't charge to come do his research, he wouldn't charge to send the notices out. The new attorneys, yeah, that's how they're making their money.
So the fifteen percent.
They get paid hourly.
The fifteen percent would pay the attorney's fees, right, maybe?
If it went through auction, but the research and sending out notices is an hourly wage.
No, but the way it was, the way it was, it would all come out of the fifteen percent.
Yes.
The fifteen percent, you would think it's covered.
He didn't charge for coming to do his time, he was just, yeah.
That sounds like a very unusual lawyer.
So, so.
I don't know.
The way it's being held, going to be held?
No, the way it was.
The way it was.
I remember.
It was very convenient.
I remember asking, there, there was an attorney, John Riley from Montpelier, that Marcia used to use for years, and I remember asking him, how, how do you make any money on this? And he told me, you know, every once in a while, you get a really good one, where the fifteen percent makes up for all the ones that.
Right.
Weren't good.
Now it's only looking like they're gonna get around three grand and we're probably gonna end up spending five to six hundred bucks to have this auction.
Right, that's only a, one visit to the town clerk's office.
Is in one swoop, correct. And that's two twenty-five an hour.
Brandy, I've got a question, so let's, let's say a property goes to tax sale, you take the seventy thousand, put it in escrow, a year goes by, so, so now you've got seventy thousand dollars. The town immediately gets back taxes and penalties.
No, those are paid before I stick it in the bank.
Okay, I see, okay.
The town gets the delinquencies.
So that's paid, so let's say we have.
But then.
Six, sixty thousand left in the bank, so taxes are all paid, why can't at the end of that one-year period then, the town take a portion out of that sixty that it had spent in legal fees? Is there, the lawyer has authority to do that, let's say the lawyer, if he had been using, he had authority to take his fifteen percent out of that sixty. Wouldn't the town have that same right to, to recover its legal fees from that sixty?
That, to me, it's like a sticky note, like, ooh, just take that money out for us, it's not in writing that, I mean, our, our interest and penalty is what it is, that's what the town voted on. If you want to make your money back, you've gotta increase the interest and penalty.
Or, or maybe have an article that says, in addition to legal fees to hold the tax sale.
I would have to, as far as doing my policy.
Still sitting on the money though, from the, from the point.
For a year, so we essentially have to front the money to the lawyer.
So they all, yeah, and then the whole cushion ends up going, but, yeah, I would, I'm gonna have to do some research because I'm not happy with the money coming out of the town. I don't think it's fair, but I also don't think they should just slide by when my policy is two years, so.
It seems like the town.
And it's not fair to the rest of the town, I'm sorry.
Should be able to recover it, I wonder if that would be a subject for an article.
So. I think it's gonna either have to be, again, on a town warning, or I don't know if it can just be on my policy.
Would V L C T?
Because I have my policy of my own.
I see, yeah.
For the delinquency, and that's where, another thing is, I never had to go before the board to ask for their signature included, I, it was always my decision, I picked the attorney.
Yeah, I had a friend in another town who told me that their board always had to approve all the sales that went for delinquent taxes, so, I don't know, I guess it could be either way.
So, yeah, I gotta do my research on that, it's just.
Would V L C T have any guidance?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Can I, can I ask one more question? How would increasing the interest and penalty solve this problem?
Uh, get more incentive to them, to get them to pay, if you're looking at a three percent interest, let's say, a three percent interest and penalty together combined. Are you gonna want to, so for instance, again, using one that I use for pre-town meeting, their taxes are almost fourteen grand a year. I don't get it until the year's up. There's no sense of pay, they're obviously making more money on fourteen thousand in the bank than they are paying me on time.
And, and likely.
At the one percent.
Right.
So. Yeah.
I see.
There's been the other discussion of making the list public.
I thought it was public, the list of delinquencies.
If, you can come in the office, but not make it public, put it in the town report.
We used to. We used to publish it, we published it in the town report for years.
I feel like that was in the town report once, because I forgot.
So, yes, it can be put in the town report, it can be public, people put it in the newspaper.
Yeah, but those people who, who are paying, who should be paying, aren't gonna be the ones that are gonna be embarrassed by seeing in the town report.
Well, I don't know, there's one that's an attorney that.
Well, that one, gosh, yeah, really.
So, I don't, I think something's gotta give here and it's, it's, so I will see if I can tweak either bringing a new policy that I can change for delinquencies, including that. But this is all fresh still and I'm still, yeah, I don't like the town having to be charged.
Yeah, and then we, once you know how much it's gonna be, then we'll have to start budgeting for it and, yeah, too bad. There was a whole, I don't know if you two were even around, but we had the whole big discussion about, Marcia used to tell people that it had to be eight percent because the, the penalty had to be eight percent, because that was what the state required, but it wasn't correct.
You don't have to, but most towns are eight percent and that's where they get their money.
Good, but most of them are because the, because the town clerks are making, you know, the treasurer, delinquent tax collectors are getting a lot of money out of it.
Right, but the town's also getting their money instead of sitting waiting on it.
Yep.
We're waiting on ninety-three thousand, that would be awful nice to have ninety-three thousand in our pocket for this B M A.
So you're gonna do more research, Brandy, and let us know what you find?
Yeah, I really didn't want to have to, yeah, being elected and its own, its own, yeah, I'm still struggling with that. So, yeah, I have to figure out some things and, and look and see where other towns are going with what route and, yeah, but.
Well, thanks for putting all the work into that, doesn't sound like fun.
That's all I got.
That's enough.
Can I just make a comment, this is some humor here that, that I observed from Steve, Michael's comments at the end of that, could we just ask the V L C T, a lot of these conversations, and one of these days will smarten up and come to that right at the top. Usually, that's usually the best line of.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Attorney on their own, that's free, it's, it's free.
They are very helpful.
They, they're not always helpful, but I'll talk about that later.
But we do pay them a great deal of money and.
We do, yeah, they gave me that, oh, never mind, I'll talk about it when we get to personnel policy, Steve, you're up next.
For the library?
Yes.
Okay, so the library, the library hopes to apply for a grant through the U S Department of Treasury. Came to the board, it's about a year ago, it was in March of last year when we found out about the grant. And then we've been throughout the year considering in our meetings, the library board trustees meetings. We had three inspections over the course of the year, once we found out what the, what the grant would cover, I guess I should, I should start with that. The grant is intended to ensure that libraries can continue to provide for at least five, three, five years. Access to internet, high-speed internet for education, work and health monitoring. We do have high-speed internet, we have two computers over there, we have wifi. And part of the conditions for the, the grant are that you can fix the, the structure, the envelope of your building. So if you're, the building itself that houses the, the access to the internet is compromised, then the, that would be sort of a qualifying criteria for the grant. So, we had three inspections, the first one was in August, House Right Solutions came, walked around. And then we had Larry Eldred, former custodian of these buildings and the director of facilities for the elementary school district. Now, it's now called Mountain View Elementary School District. Then we had Efficiency Vermont Com. And a common, common theme to these inspections was that the exterior of the building needs some work. And it, it appears to everyone, myself included, it's normal wear and tear, that the people that build this, that built this did a very good job. And I'll tell you, that was indicated by the roof that was, that was reshingled, I think it was three years ago. They reshingled the roof and there was some concern, I remember we were talking to Michael about that, when he was on the board, that, what's the condition of the decking, the plywood on the roof? It was, it was excellent condition, they were able to just tear off the shingles and reshingle it. So, and I've had that, and I must say this, the pleasure of going up in the attic here for the summer, it's neat as a pin up there. There's, there's cellulose insulation, the cables, the electrical cables are stapled to the rafters up there, it's very neat. What, someone's been caring for this building, just like their hundred and ten-year-old school over there, people have been caring for these, these structures here, so, and it shows. So, what are the findings from these three inspections? The, the consensus is that there are exterior boards near the ground that are starting to rot. There's splashback from the, the.
These are just trim boards, like clavors and stuff?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And, you know, you've got the east and north sides here, they don't get the sun, they're, the worst boards are here on the north side naturally. Some of that also has to do with the grating, just over the course of time, from leaves blowing and grass clippings and so forth. The, you know, the grade of the land up against the building has, has risen. So anyway, the, the exterior boards around the bottom are starting to rot in places, that's one. So for that, the recommendation is to remove eight or ten inches from around the, the whole exterior. And you, you'll see, some of these points, we've got plywood, it's like pressure-treated plywood, that's held up well, considering where it is there against the ground. But it's starting to warp, it's time to be replaced, so, so we need some work around the exterior bottom of the building. The overall around the building, there's paint chipping, not too bad, but we don't want it to get too bad, we wanna preserve what's good there now. So, painting and the other one would be to replace these two doors. We could, if, if there were light out there, we could see, this door is starting to rot down. I think they're good quality metal doors, but they've served, served their time, they're rusting, rusting, yeah.
They rot.
What's that?
You can see the rust.
You can see it. You're gonna swing the camera on the door, we, we can all see it, we'll take our word for it. That one's rusting, this one is difficult to close, it's scraping against the.
So what did you come up with for a total?
Doors.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, and the other one would be to, one of the window sills needs to be replaced, some trim boards at various places around, not all the trim board. And then another gable vent on the, I think it's on the south end, and that's just to increase the ventilation up in the attic to ensure that the decking boards remain as sound as they are now. So, and there was one more recommendation, that would be to put in some French drains on the north side here, the east side, just to help the drainage and carry it away. The total for all, and, and one other expense, the library board talked about this and approved it, was to hire a clerk of the work, someone to manage this. And Larry Eldred said that he would, so the total cost of this job would have been twenty-one thousand, five hundred. However, recently I measured the distance from this building to the wetland, it's within one hundred feet. And in my understanding, that would require some kind of permitting, because that would be where we would have to do some of the excavation, so.
For a curtain drain?
I think so, I think so, yeah. I, I don't know, I, so I, I would like to say that we move conservatively and not get ourselves into a problem of permitting near a wetland.
Stay away from that wetland.
Yeah, we, there's another grant coming up in the fall, specifically for small rural libraries. So if we find that we can get a permit for the drain, then maybe we could apply for that in the fall. But right now, I talked to Bob Martin, our zoning administrator, and I'm certain after my conversation with him, that we don't need any other permits, just paint. Replace the doors and some trim boards, so I think we're, we're all sound with the permitting. So that would bring the, the cost of the project up, including clerk of the works to seventeen thousand. So, the application is due tomorrow, so.
What's the percentage, what's the?
Zero, there's no matching costs required.
Where do we sign?
Okay. And I, I just, I just wanna acknowledge here, all the great work that uh, our library director, Miranda O'Neil, has done. Not only in assisting this grant, but generally, so she's done an exemplary job, and also our trustee, Alicia Rennie, she's helped with this. And um, while I'm giving out thanks, I would also like to acknowledge Sarah Van Hoff. Who served many years in a, in a variety of ways in library board and town, she's done a great job, and she just retired from the board. This past year, so I just, I, I just wanna acknowledge her, her great work for the town and the board, so where do you sign, okay? I've got a couple of copies here, if one needs to be in the records. So we'll submit this tomorrow, and I'll keep you posted.
We hereby support the Woodbury Community Library's application for a seventeen thousand dollar grant through the US Treasury Capital Projects Fund for Libraries. The grant will fund a project to address critical repairs and improvements to the building that houses the library and adjacent community room. The repairs and improvements will ensure that the Woodbury community will have a continued access to high-speed internet, directly enable work, education, and health monitoring. At the library through at least December thirty-one, twenty thirty-one. The building is owned by the town of Woodbury, in this matter of property ownership, the Woodbury Select Board represents the town. On behalf of the town, we hereby authorize Stephen Murphy, Chair of the Woodbury Community Library Board of Trustees, to apply. For the grant to make the repairs and improvements described in the application. Okay, we approve and sign this letter at our regular public meeting on March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, you were ready.
Ready, yeah, we've had a year, we, we've got a year to do this and we waited the night before, how's that?
That lines are great.
Oh, I should've, I should've had, I should've had a motion, but that was a motion, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here you go.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you.
You'll give us a, you'll give us a copy of that at some point?
Yes, I will, yeah, if you want the signed copy, I can make a copy at home, I have other blank copies.
So, sign, keep the sign, we can just, yeah, give us a blank one, we'll just put some initials on it and, okay. We can just initial that, we'll keep that for our copy. No, I don't need another file, I don't know why I said that, but. Robin can have that one, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
Sorry to make you wait, Alfie, but since you have the.
That's okay.
Uh, executive session at the end.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
So, the sand screen.
Yeah.
Last meeting, we talked extensively about a contract needed for the sand screen. Chris promised me he would write that up and get it to me, I have not seen it. Don't know where it is, if it was ever generated, if it was uh, if this, if this.
I was gonna, you know, I didn't do this today, I got a late start, cause I had to shovel my driveway, but anyway. Uh, I can't figure, I got these sample contracts from VLCT, and they're not, they're, contracts are services, they're not contracts for buying something, that's why. I have a hard time um, figuring out how to make this into something that'll satisfy Brandy.
I have a question, Brandy, would you be able to create a contract, you know what needs to be in it?
I want a purchase agreement, if I'm handing over a check for four grand and not getting anything until the end, I want something stating that we are gonna get it in the end. I'm not just cutting a check for four grand to somebody that, I mean, this is very clear to me, that why wouldn't the select board want this?
But could you create that, you know what is needed?
Well, we have.
I have a lot of.
We have a what?
We have an invoice.
Right, we have a.
That states uh, that you want to deposit.
Right.
So, that's your paper trail. This isn't, this isn't, this is an actual company, it's not just somebody's backyard throwing weld together. He's a little bit of a company.
He's got this invoice made on his QuickBooks, and it says, um, payment instructions, fifty percent deposit required. Invoice due date, February fifteenth, well, that didn't happen, invoice amount eighty-five hundred. And then he's got his other information about who he is and how he's legitimate and he's a.
So Diana, you said you, you talked to VLCT and they gave you sample contracts that are not.
Yeah, this, well, these are just what I um.
There's a full-blown, and you don't have to, even, even the mowing one that we took, that, when Skip Lindsey was on the select work, he designed many contracts and RFPs. So that's why the mowing one, I just pull out because it was already created by a select person, um.
So can we just?
If you don't, if you don't want a contract for, for giving, just cutting a check to. I just know that when VLCT comes to do my audit and I don't have a contract in place.
But can't that, can't that invoice work, work as a?
It's on a contract, that's on a contract.
So, we need to know what kinda contract it is, well, what is it requiring, what's it, what's the contract? I mean, we have an invoice that spells out what he's gonna do, what he's gonna build for us, that it's requiring a deposit.
Yep, and if it's over six hundred dollars, I get audited on it for ten ninety-nine.
Alfie, when do you?
Stating insurance.
When do you need this by?
This has been going on for a year.
Okay, but when?
Or more.
When do you need it?
Not more, but it's been going on for long enough.
Yeah.
We did have it as a grant that was fully paid for.
It's supposed to come out of this year's budget, which is July one, so we have to spend this money, or should spend this money in this budget. Um, so that's sort of my only pressure, I mean, I'm almost done with the sand screen for the year, it's spring, I'm not, you know.
Not using it.
Other than, other than using the money out of the budget, that's my pressure. Also, this guy, we've been lead, I've been talking to this guy for, for a couple of months.
Yeah.
About trying to get him to build one that's a great deal cheaper, I've showed, I've showed estimates, quotes from other, other builders.
You did give us two estimates.
And this is the cheapest, cheapest one, so I don't wanna lose it.
Can you send me, if, if the board agrees, if you can send me the, the sample mowing contract that you suggested and I'll, I'll edit it?
Sure.
To do that, and then is that?
Well, I just wanna interject because, so from talking to you outside of the meeting. Um, I was really under the understanding that we just need a purchase and sales agreement, not a contract for services, so wouldn't.
So, there's two different contracts, I showed Diana that VLCT has, there's a limit one, um, so that it's tweaked. Yeah, the office is a mess because I'm not caught up with myself.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is contract for limited services, but it also, I was supposed to. It does say, if you have questions about this contract or about your liability exposure for contract services of any kind, please contact your passive loss control consultant. And I was gonna do that today, and I didn't. But I think it could be fairly simple if he said, if you want us to have him sign something that says, I will do this.
I think that's all it needs to be, it, it, it can be really simple, I'm happy to drop something.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Chris.
Isn't that quote, doesn't that quote give you that?
It, it'll take me, Alfie, it's gonna take me no time at all, I'll just do it and we'll get it done.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm not gonna take it, it's gonna be simple.
You want, you want this in case? Sure, for some wordage, if you need any wordage, okay. Yeah, Chris, Chris Cody is.
Uh, so then the, the engineering, uh, I, I guess we need a contract for that as well.
Well, I did, I just wanted to, I mean, I meant to put these things at the end of your report, but. We did uh, talk, Chris, a while ago about hiring Nate Seacar of Ruggles Engineering. To do the design work for the two bridges up on Cabot Road, off Cabot Road. And um, he came back with, with two, uh. They were each about seventy-six hundred dollars, they're separate projects, um, I wanna have Skip go over this because they will be FEMA projects. He said um, today that probably won't, um, he said. Field work will be completed this summer and I would plan for design work to be completed in the fall for permit approval and preparation for a late fall or winter bid. I guess, um, I have to find out from Skip whether there are any timelines on the FEMA money.
I think, didn't he say twenty twenty-five, there was some kind of thing that the bridges wouldn't?
Yeah, I don't remember, if that's true, then that's good, okay.
Meaning it has to be done before twenty twenty-five, or it just has to be under contract before twenty twenty-five?
Um, I don't, my memory is not exact, but I remember the year twenty twenty-five, um, I don't know if it was the end of the year or. But, yeah, for the bridges, that the town had a, a good stretch of time to.
So, as our.
He's saying he would have the, the design by the fall?
Yeah. That's what he said today, cause I asked him, I asked him, one of these came through and said it was gonna be a culvert, and I questioned that, was that a typo or? And he said, because the one, the, the first one, the twenty-three, was actually a culvert, I forgot about that.
It wasn't, it was a culvert.
That was a culvert, or a bunch of culverts, or something like that, so, he said that would be depend. Um, he said, I use the term culvert since the existing structure that washed out had been a culvert, the new structure will need to meet current rules, so we would plan. For it to be a bridge or what we would uh, all, what we would call a three-sided box culvert. Final determination as the design progresses, so.
Right, right, cause you have to kinda follow up the state engineers recommend.
Right.
So what, what do we have to do with that, I mean, he's, sounds like he's on board to, to get started in field work.
Yeah, do you wanna, um, I think I sent you all these.
Yeah, you did.
Do you wanna agree to it, and I can go through and fill in the blanks and the?
Sure, I mean, I think we should probably get, get it rolling, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
The one thing that I remember him saying was, he was, he's gonna want uh, bore, bore testing.
Mm-hmm.
Which is where they take a drill and drill down into the ground to see how far the bedrock is. Uh, that's gonna be an expense to the town.
Separately?
FEMA will cover in the end, but it's gonna come out of our coffers right now.
Oh.
Or whenever we do the work, if it's the summer when he's doing this field work.
Okay, uh-huh.
And he needs that done before he comes up with the plan for it.
Before he does the full engineer, yes.
Yeah.
How about the hydrological study? I read somewhere this, the state was doing some of that for people.
The hydraulic. The hydraulic study is done by the state, they do, they do all of them.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So that's not an added cost, it's just waiting in line for them to get.
Okay, so that has to be done before he can do his part too, huh? How do we get in line for that, will he take care of that? We did the application for the stream alteration permit.
Right.
We did sign that.
Right, uh, we should, that's for, who does it?
Does he cover here?
No.
Okay.
Right, that was for, for temporary, the temporary bridges. The one that you.
Oh, no, we did, we did one, no, we did one recently for this, for these bridges.
Oh, really?
I'm pretty sure we signed it all on it, maybe it was, no, I thought we did that one for long ago, I thought we did that.
No, I think that one, one you're thinking of is for.
Okay, okay, well, I thought it was, okay.
So whether he does it or, or one of us does it, we need to call the state and order that hydraulic study.
So that was gonna be my question for you two, when do you wanna take charge of this? Michael, you're our road.
The bridges project?
Yeah.
I can call UTRANS to get the hydraulic study done, but I, I don't really wanna be in charge of all those things, so.
Right, well, I mean, they're, other than calling the, the hydraulic study, then Nate's gonna kinda take over, he's gonna be. Sort of doing all the rest of the permits and getting us a design.
Okay.
And then it'll come time, he'll, he usually, usually the engineers will also put out the bids. Which organize the contractors, that, that's all that.
Yeah, that's.
I could be way wrong. I can call UTRANS to have the hydraulic, that's the hydraulic study.
Yeah, we're done, okay.
So it's, it's Highway twenty-three and Highway twenty-four.
Okay.
Which if they do them both together, it might save them a lot of work, cause it's the same string.
So I actually don't remember, Diana, or, or, did you guys take a look at these? Did he, in his services, does he apply for all, do all the permitting?
He does.
He does, great.
I think it's back here somewhere.
He's done a lot of work for the town, and he's highly regarded by UTRANS anyway, he's District Seven, I don't know, who's, about District Six.
So I'll make a motion that we approve both um, proposals by Nate Seacar, do I have that right?
A second thought.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, coordination of permits, prepare final plans, existing site for hydro, hydrologic analysis, he has that in for. Four hours, but nothing in total, so that means he, I guess somebody else does it. Twenty-four hours for the plans, coordinating permits, NR stream permit, four hours, prepare final plans, eight hours for, so that's the details that he came up with. Great. So, get going on that. So, how's the rest of your life going?
The rest of my life?
No, I mean your work. You have another life?
We don't have time for that. Well, we're shorthanded.
Yeah.
Uh, Timmy was out sick all last week.
Oh, no.
Except for Friday, he worked, he worked a little bit Monday and then he was out until Friday, uh, with the flu. Um, so, I was out with the grader just about every day, pushing snow back, so that would be, get the water to run away. Um, we've hauled a bunch of gravel, that process is starting, pits are opening up, I was able to get gravel from uh. McDonald, our field. Got some from gravel construction, so things are starting to move in our favor that way. This week, I'm gonna probably haul some more back to the garage, so that we have it on hand. Because the roads right now are very, and we can get into that a little bit further, but the roads are very soft right now. And the more we put our trucks out there, sanding or plowing an inch or two of snow, we're causing more damage than what we're fixing. So, I couldn't get into that with him, but he was not allowing me to speak, so. Um, but that's why I'm trying to limit the amount the trucks are out, cause the roads are very soft. They are, they're, you know, we're causing more damage, but even the little one ton is sinking in. So, we gotta be wise about that. So, this week, I'm gonna try to just haul back to the shop so we have it on hand. And if we have frozen mornings, we can bring the gravel out to the really bad spots and fix those. Um, so that's sort of my plan of attack for right now. But these roads are changing, they're changing so fast, I mean, like I said, it was, it was two days of rain and then it, and then it turned to snow. And I had no idea we were getting fourteen inches of snow, no idea, they said, they said a dozen inches, two inches.
Yeah, I know, well, that's why, when I, we talked about this last time this happened, and it was a day, it was a holiday, like President's Day or something. And you said you didn't know how much snow we had up here, so that's why Saturday or Sunday morning, when I woke up and we had that six inches of snow, I tried to send you a text. And you didn't get it until today, because I didn't realize I couldn't send a text from home, so, sorry.
Channel forty-four was telling us we could get up to eighteen inches out of this last storm we just got.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, I don't listen to Channel forty-four, I don't watch TV at all, so.
So where are you getting your weather information from?
I get it from the phone, I get it. I get it from the phone, I get it from NOAA Weather on the, on the computer. Um, and, and this, well, this morning is a perfect example. I left my house this morning at five o'clock, there was this much snow, a half an inch of snow. I get up here to Woodbury, there was two inches of snow. So from that little distance, what is it, four miles to my house? It's that much difference in the snow amounts.
Yeah.
So, I don't live in Woodbury. I don't have, I could call you guys and you can call me every morning and say, yep, there's a half an inch of snow or nope, there's four inches of snow. But I live in Callas, there's a difference between the, the two.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do on Sunday morning and I shouldn't.
Every single morning and come and just drive the roads, but you're gonna pay me for that.
I didn't want to call you when it'd be early in the morning because I'm.
Is that, is that helpful to have somebody text?
It didn't help because it didn't, the text didn't get it.
I got it.
Yeah, okay.
For me to text you, because I, I live pretty high elevation. So I'm happy to shoot a text to say, hey, this is, this is roughly what we've got on the ground, happy to do it.
I've constantly told people to contact me. I, I want, I need that information, it's very helpful.
Before we, before the meeting's over, let me get your, I might have your contact information, but if I don't, let me just check.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to do that.
It's spattered all over, it's in the office, it's, everybody's got it.
Okay.
Robin can get you a, we'll get you a, yeah, one of those.
That will be updated shortly with Chris's information on it and.
This is just our local, for all our towns and purposes, it's not a public thing.
Okay.
It's just, you need to get a hold of somebody at home or something like that, that's okay. That's what those things are for. So what about posting? You know what, they told me, it used to be that the quarry people didn't mind about uh, mud season posting because their road was so bad. When they were coming out on that flat road, they didn't, you know, they couldn't keep that open either. But now, they're just ruining our road. So.
I'll post them tomorrow morning. All I gotta do is call the state, the, the Secretary of Transportation and they send me a letter. I posted in two public places and I put the poster signs up, it's that simple.
Do you think it's warranted at this point?
Well, obviously, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay.
I mean, but, but my, my problem is, you can't stop them. There's only a few trucks that you can stop. It's the guy, the logger, it's the gravel truck, it's, you can't stop the gas, the, the propane, school buses.
Right.
All these vehicles, these service vehicles are causing as much damage or more.
Right.
So, yeah, we can shut, we can shut our only interest for down in town, we can shut them down for four months, that's fine, or three months. I don't think that's right. I think that that, that quarry brings a lot of money to this town and I don't, I think we should work with them. So that's why, one of the, another reason why I didn't go to posting right away.
They expect to be, the roads to be posted eventually though, right?
Mm-hmm.
The quarry does. I mean, that's got, that's probably built into, that's gotta be built into their business plan. Is that they, every year.
Okay, then I'll post it. I, look, I have no problem. I'm just, I don't wear a badge. And you people are not gonna go and talk to that trucker that's out there running on the roads. You're gonna want me to.
No, but if we tell me very well.
I think, could I just say something? I think that you're right, you're not gonna be able to catch everybody, but like, and also you're not gonna be able to stop the fuel trucks and the buses, but there are some folks that probably, I know that, and you know, like we don't bring concrete trucks in certain times of year, so that keeps that off the roads.
Right.
And so it is minimizing some of the damage to the roads.
Right, and most people are very respectful of that.
Yeah, agreed.
They'll call and say, hey, can I, can I, can I go, it's gonna be froze, can I?
Totally.
And so I have that relationship with a lot of, a lot of contractors, truckers. And so that's what I was relying on, but obviously that's not enough.
So, would the quarry people ever call you or something like that?
They used to, they did. I talked to them. I talked to them and they asked me if I was gonna post and I said, I'm gonna try not to. But I respect, I want you to respect my roads.
And they did.
At ten, ten or eleven o'clock, I want you to stop trucking. So, I, I don't know what this gentleman was saying about the truck, what time of day that was.
It was hours stuck on the hill, hours.
So.
And then when his log.
Okay, so here's a problem. I'm the guy that's gonna fix that, how come I am just hearing about this truck being stuck for seven hours?
I didn't say seven hours, I said hours.
You said several hours.
I said hours. It was hours.
Okay, well, at any rate, I'm just hearing about it now. Why couldn't I have heard about it when it was happening? So I could have gone and had a conversation with them or helped them get out.
So this morning over the radio, somebody radioed you, radioed you and you didn't respond, so some.
Meeting on Friday. Look over this one that, there's a lot of questions here, I mean, it's really complicated process, oh my god.
Then you'll come back and offer a recommendation?
Right, the board will, yeah. And we'll also con, contract with, I mean, we'd stay in contact with our town rep for um, the tax department, property evaluation and review, Barb Schlessinger, she's a very helpful one. Because I missed the deadline for the original application. I mean, this original thing that we were supposed to send in by December twentieth because of misunderstandings here and there, uh, but it doesn't seem like we're gonna get punished for that, so. Because a lot of towns are in the same boat, a lot of towns.
Right, right, everybody's looking to get it done.
And there's not a lot of contractors, I was surprised this one guy responded as soon as he did. Okay, so. Anything else to say on purchasing policy or reappraisal or? Office heating system? Okay, I'll make a motion that we go into an executive session then pursuant to one V S A three-one-three A three regarding appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee.
And you want to invite Alfie to the meeting?
And we're inviting Alfie to stay.
Second motion.